This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so this is the Collins Public Library Board of Trustees meeting, and we're going to call this meeting to order. We're going to start with a roll call. I'm going to have, oh, Edith is here. Hi, Edith.
Hi, I'm here.
Okay, great. I'm going to start with a roll call to see who's on, and then all of the minutes, we'll just do a voice vote, and then we will have a roll call on the, on the resolution. There's too many, too many minutes to have a roll call for each one. Okay?
Yes.
So, Helga?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yep, you're here. Simanisi?
Simanisi.
I spelled it out phonetically for you, so that I could get it right. Cynthia Dishman is not coming. Barb is here.
I'm here.
Rob Gaylord?
Here.
Kim Nobles?
I'm here.
Edith is here.
I'm here.
Becky Jo Summers? Elaine?
Here.
And Dave?
Here.
So really, the only one we're missing that we got a response from is Becky. Becky, you're not on the line, are you? Okay. So we'll start with the first secretary's report. Anybody have any questions on the safety committee meeting minutes? If not, can I get a motion to approve?
I saw approve. Barb.
Barb. Barb, and a second?
Helga.
Helga? Okay. All approved, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried. The second one is the February 11th regular meeting minutes. Anybody have questions on that?
Move it.
Nope. Can I get a motion to approve?
Rob moved. I'll second. Dave?
Okay, so that was Rob and Dave?
Yes.
Okay. Got that, Edith?
Uh, wait a minute. Say that again.
Rob, Rob's, um...
Rob moved.
Rob moved, and Dave seconded it.
Thank you.
February 22nd, finance, oh, well, so I guess we should vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion is carried. The next one up is the February 22nd Finance Committee meeting minutes. Any questions on these? If not, can I get a motion to approve, uh, to, uh, yeah, to approve?
Elaine.
Elaine, and a second?
Dave?
Dave will second it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion is carried. The next one is the March 9th Planning Committee meeting minutes.
Um, just a note, I screwed up, and it says Finance Committee. The date is correct, but it should be Planning.
Which one?
On the, for March 9?
Minutes say Finance Committee meeting. It should say Planning.
Mine don't say, mine don't say, oh, I see, on the, on the paper.
Right.
Right, right, right. Okay. Um, any, any questions? Comments? If not, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Dave?
Who, who, who moved?
Helga.
Helga?
Helga.
It was Helga, and who seconded?
Rob seconded.
Rob, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, no public expression. The financial report?
Uh, we need to approve the special meeting minutes from the 25th. Or 20, yeah.
Oh, sorry, yeah, here it is. Thanks.
Yep.
Uh, any questions on the special meeting? Can I get a motion to approve if there are no questions or comments? Barb, Barb will, Barb moves?
Who?
Second?
I missed that.
Barb. Barb.
Barb, thank you.
Second?
Elaine.
Elaine, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Was it actually, was the minutes of the 20, was that meeting on the 25th or the 26th?
Yeah.
Agenda says 26, the minutes say 25.
Right.
It should be the 25th. The agenda is incorrect.
Okay.
Okay, now we're up to the financial report, yeah? The Treasury Report? Or did we do the, yeah, okay. I'm out of order now, some screwed up.
You're not.
Lot, lot of meeting minutes.
Thank you.
Um, so Becky Jo's not here to explain anything. Is there anything we should be focused on, Abby?
Um, nothing too exciting. You know, our revenue is down for the operations account as we expected. And we'll, we'll see how that goes going forward. Uh, one thing of note is that we got a donation from Gowanda Correctional Facility for their Jeans Day donation, and that was a thousand dollars, so that was...
Very nice. Wow, very nice. Wow.
Won't get any more of those.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, we won't see anymore.
Outgoing jeans.
But are there any other questions?
Nope.
So the, um... Why do we have Johnson Fire Protection in both accounts?
Oh, um, so it really should be out of the operating account? It's, it was a separate bill. They come a bunch, and they like check our fire extinguishers, they go through our fire...
Right.
And the big one down in the private account right now is the annual cost of the fire alarm monitoring. We don't have enough in the operating account to cover that right now.
Ah.
Once we do have enough, we will be able to transfer that from our operating into, back into our private, and we'll be able to do that then, but...
Okay.
We have funds in there.
Okay. If there's no other questions, can I get a motion to approve the Treasury Report?
Rob, move it.
Thank you. Anybody for a second?
Elaine.
Elaine?
Yep, seconded.
Okay. All right, so now we're ready for the executive report, Abby?
We got a vote to approve?
Oh, boy.
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's carried. Executive report?
Okay, so first is the Rigs Fund. We found out that in October of '21, we're going to be receiving $537, which is more than last year, so that's exciting. Andy made a donation to the fund of $3,000 at the end of 2020, and we sent our thanks, of course, and an update on the dispersment to him, just so he knows how everything's coming along. Um, I do plan to send, uh, a, a note to him, just, oh, gosh, reiterating what we've purchased so far. Um, just to let him know, I think I just am closing out that within the next few days. Um, so we got quite a few books, and I'd like to feature them going forward, uh, so people know about the fund and the good things Andy's doing. Um, okay, on to COVID-19. We're actually, it says stage three there, but we're really kind of in stage four of our reopening plan. Um, the public facing library staff have become eligible for vaccines as of March 17th, and it's, it's looking, we're, we're on our way. Um, so our programs, we're starting to ramp them up a little bit, the Take and Make Kids Crafts Continue, the Winter YA Writing Club, um, their last meeting is today. They're actually touring Quality Services Bindery right now, and they're seeing how their books are, were created, and we're getting...
Are they doing, are they doing another book this, this season or?
Yep, yes. We'll be receiving our copy hopefully, you know, uh, as soon as Jason brings it back, and we'll have the third volume of that in place in our library. Um, so, and that, that's really cool. I'm glad that we were able to do a full, a full tour of the bindery. They were excited to get the kids in there, so it's, it's going to be good for everybody. Um, a little bit of troubles with, you know, just making sure that everything was covered with, you know, everybody's masked, and we can be socially distant, and just the coordinating that, but seems to be going well. I haven't gotten any, you know, reports about anything bad, so...
Good.
We're excited.
Do you think we ought to do something to acknowledge them?
Um, we, we've been featuring them in social media, and we, I had Jason pick up a bouquet to bring to them with, with the thank you note. And we'll be sending a thank you note from the kids with a picture of them once we're able to have that printed.
Good, good.
That's good.
Um, so young adult and adult evening book clubs are resuming. Um, and they, well, I haven't had the adults back. They come in next Tuesday, but we're excited to get them back in, and it's small, but we're, we're slowly building.
It's a good way to do it.
Yeah, I don't want to bring back too much and then get overwhelmed. I'm just kind of doing it one at a time, really.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, so you can see, uh, our, our programs, they're going up for February and March.
Mm-hmm.
You know, slow and steady. And hopefully, you know, things will get better with the weather, and we'll have a few more people in, and we'll be able to handle everything.
Yeah, right.
Um, for the WIU, so it was 206 in February, and for March, it's 237.
Wow.
Well, that's good. Yeah, that went up a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, good.
Um, so on to building maintenance. This was, March was a busy month. Uh, the actuators were fixed, and the filters were installed on March 5th. The window in the children's area was fixed on March 10th. And we met with, with Ken Martin on the March 5th to discuss the roof. We are going to try to...
Wait a minute, Ken Martin?
Yeah.
Uh, oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought it was Ken Stone.
Oh, no, no, sorry.
Okay.
I've been emailing Ken Stone a lot about this, but I haven't had, I haven't met with him face to face.
Yeah.
Okay.
Pursuing a library construction grant for the roof. Um, and we're also going to be doing a lot of the interior LED lights with this project as well.
But just to be clear, for anybody who wasn't aware of this, they are going ahead with the roof regardless of the construction grant.
Right.
So...
Before that's grant, before that's awarded, you mean?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So the, the lights go with...
I mean, even if it's never...
The lights go with the roof, too? That's included?
Say that again?
The LED lights go with the roof? They're included, or, no?
We're building it into our construction grant. Um, it'll help us get around some of the trickier aspects about start and finish dates, um, so that the roof can get done quickly, and we are still able to, you know, have the LED lights done, too. Um, because we, it's something that the system wants done, to replace most of our interior lights with LED. Um, we still don't know quite what to do about the pendulum lights. We've been looking for a replacement that we could possibly bring in, but we haven't found anything quite yet. So we do have plans to do all the small canister lights and, uh, most of the, the tube lights, so that's...
That means you have to get new lights for that LED, or that's just the bulbs?
Um, most, it's the bulbs, but they do something, um, there's a small installation kit that they put in that converts it from regular so that it can be LED.
Okay. Supposed to be really cheap, the LEDs, or last a lot longer.
Yeah, yeah, that'll be good, so that, you know, you don't have someone having to go up to change it. They'll last a lot longer, they're energy efficient, so overall, it's a good thing.
Abby, we don't, uh, we'll still qualify for the construction grant as long as we don't finish the roof prior to, you know, a grant being awarded, correct?
Prior to when we hit submit on the application to the system, which usually happens in September. That's why we're doing the LED lights as well, because they can start as of July 1st on the roof, and as long as the LED lights are not fully installed before that September date, we're okay.
Okay.
It's sort of like Senate rules, Rob.
Yeah.
The parliamentarian has allowed us getting that.
He has ways there, so that's all good. I like the creativity. I just want to make sure that we're still good.
Right.
Even if they have one LED light left, um, we have to pay them a couple hundred bucks or so, it's called a... That's the way to go.
Very good.
Um, who did, who, again, did the, uh, the filters and all that? What company did that for us?
Um, that was Try-R.
Try-R?
Yeah.
Where are they out of? I've heard of them. I know we've talked about it, but I...
I have no idea.
Really off script. I should ask after the meeting. Our church is looking for people that do this kind of work, so I was, I saw, I'll catch up with you after the meeting.
Yeah, I'll look it up and send that to you.
Okay, great. That's super.
Okay, um, and there's no updates on the budget this month for state or federal funding. Um, they, they're voting on it soon, though, so we might have some idea. Um, we don't think that there's going to be any major cuts that we, that haven't been anticipated, though. Any questions about that?
Okay, we need a, a vote to approve the executive report. Can somebody move that for me? Can I get a motion to approve it? That was Dave. Can I get a second?
Elaine.
Elaine. You've got that, Edith?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Committee reports? Uh, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, sorry. All, all in favor of approving the executive report, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
You opposed?
He's being...
Dave, I mean, um...
I was late, aye.
Rob is being smart.
No, I said aye.
It was him.
Bob, you...
No, I said aye.
Yeah, on the opposed, you said aye on the opposed vote.
I was late for the aye.
Don't mess us up, Robbie.
Okay. Whatever.
Okay, so let me just reiterate that we don't, do we have any opposed votes? No, no, okay. Uh, then the motion is approved. Committee reports?
Um, so the Safety Committee, when there's something to discuss, we meet every two weeks. Um, we actually just met on Tuesday and did a walk through the library. Um, so you guys will get those minutes at the next meeting. Nothing too exciting there. Uh, Planning Committee, we started. Um, we need another meeting sometime, and we'll keep planning.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to get that. Um, we're going to lose too much in between.
Yeah.
You know?
Um, and for the Finance Committee, we already saw those minutes that we met to plan the 2021 discretionary budget. So... Nothing new or exciting there. Any other questions on that stuff?
No. Unfinished business? Unfinished business? I guess we're still not doing anything with the trustee terms, right?
No, we'll look at that for either June or August. Hopefully, we'll be able to get back in for a meeting, or, you know, it'll be easier if stuff's done in person for that.
Okay. New business?
Annette has resigned from the board. I know I mentioned it, the special meeting, but we are going, I'll read her resignation letter. It's from March 8th of 2021. It is addressed to the Town of Collins Public Library Board of Trustees and the director, myself. Oh, uh, Annette says, "I have enjoyed the position as a library board member. Thus, it is with great regret that I must resign my position. Working with the library board in Abbey has provided insight into the Town of Collins Public Library operations. Please accept my regrets. Sincerely, Annette Gernot."
Was it something I said?
Probably.
I don't know, Rob.
It's too bad we'll miss her. You know, it was her, it was her idea to have the standing committees, and that's been a big, a big help.
Yeah.
You know, I'll never forget that. That was a really good opening.
She certainly had a lot of experience, so...
Yeah.
Exactly. I know.
I'm sorry to see her go. Over the weeks, up to the regret?
Uh, I didn't think we had to do anything officially.
Oh, no? All right.
I just thought... Yeah. You don't accept it?
I just wanted a regret.
Yeah. Okay, approval of the state report. Is that what this resolution is, Abby?
Yep, that's the resolution. So, um, I sent everybody out an executive summary of the state report, 2020 COVID edition.
Right, right.
Right.
Um...
Oh, is that, is that the one that Mary Jean was looking for?
No, no, that was something else.
All right.
It just, you know, typed out paper with lots of numbers and, um, all that good stuff. So we, we did add some things to our collection, a little bit less than last year, but not being building and not having, uh, many patrons, we, you know, held back a little bit. Um, our door count was down 62%. That is, you know, an expected downturn. Um, our reference transactions were down a little bit, only 19%, though, not as much as you'd think.
Yeah.
A lot of that we can attribute to, you know, when people didn't, weren't coming in. Every time we looked up a book for them, that was a reference transaction, so that definitely helped our numbers. Um, you know, Wi-Fi use in public computer sessions were down. Uh, you know, that's, again, expected. Our, our program attendances were down, and we changed a lot of the ways we were doing our counts. Um, for the financials, our operating receipts, it was different from last year because we, last year, we didn't, just how the check for the school district came, it didn't hit last year. It hit for the 2020 year, or it didn't hit for '19, it hit for '20. Um, you know, so our, our investments were up a lot. That has to do with the CDs at M&amp;T. Um, that's really bumping up our investment funds.
Great.
And our, our total dispersments were lower than last year because of personnel, a large part. And, um, you know, we didn't have a return to system, and we plan to be receiving back the $1,658, um, under Section 22, that thing that we voted on at the special meeting. Uh, are there any questions about any of these numbers or anything else, you know, related to the state report or 2020?
Abby, were the, are the other act members, statistically speaking, and we all, and we all expect that everybody to be down, or are we kind of in line with everybody else in terms of our statistics?
Uh, everybody's a little bit different. I've been watching the other libraries and just kind of seeing, like, you know, we're probably lower for public computer sessions than a few of the other ones by, you know, a few percentage points. Um, you know, but our, uh, our circulation wasn't as bad as other libraries, or, you know, the percentages weren't as bad as other libraries, so, you know, it's, it just depends what each community is calling for and using. Um, and then, you know, there have been tricky times because other libraries have had to close due to orange zone microclusters and all that. You know, we didn't have to do that, um, because our community stayed in the yellow zone. So, you know, there's so many factors, it's hard to, you know, figure out everything.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so do we want to read this, this resolution? To accept this? Do you want me to read it? Yeah?
I can do it. "Resolution adopted by the Board of Trustees of the Town of Collins Public Library at a regular meeting of said board of trustees and held virtually at the Town of Collins Public Library on the 8th day of April 2021 at 6 o'clock. I hereby certify that at a meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Collins Public Library, held virtually at the Town of Collins Public Library on the 8th day of April 21, a resolution was adopted of which the following is a true copy. Resolve that the library operated under its plan of service in accordance with the provisions of education law and the regulations of the Commissioner, and be it further resolved that the library attest that the financial information provided to the Buffalo and Erie Public Library of New York State as part of any and all reporting is true and complete, and be it further resolved that the annual report was reviewed and accepted by the Board of Trustees."
Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
Who hasn't, uh, who hasn't gotten their name in a minute yet? Ken?
I saw move, Elaine. How's that?
Okay, thank you. Second?
Barb, I'll second.
Okay, now we're going to have a roll call vote for this, so bear with me. Helga?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Rob?
Aye.
Kim?
Yes.
Edith?
Aye.
Elaine?
Aye.
Dave?
Yes.
And I, all right. The resolution is approved. Okay. Oh. So, we have another resolution. Um, the...
Resolution adopted by the Board... Resolution adopted by the Board of Trustees of the Town...
You could ask if there's any questions about the, about any of the budget information. Um, I sent you all the proposed revenues budget for both, uh, the operating and private discretionary. Um, and then I sent a breakdown of the discretionary budget. And a breakdown of, uh, the Gowanda Central Tax Fund, uh, tax funds, the plan for what we plan to use that for.
Right.
Does anybody have any questions, comments?
No.
Abby, that brochure you put out was really nice.
Oh, thank you.
No, it's, it's very nice, yeah.
Okay, can we go forward with reading of the resolution?
"Resolution adopted by the Board of Trustees of the Town of Collins Public Library at a regular meeting of said board of trustees held virtually at the Town of Collins Public Library on the 8th day of April 2021 at 6 o'clock. I hereby certify that at a meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Collins Public Library, held virtually at the Town of Collins Public Library on the 8th day of April 2021, a resolution was adopted of which the following is a true copy. a resolution was adopted of which the following is a true copy. Whereas the 2021 discretionary budget of the Town of Collins Public Library has been recommended for adoption by the Budget and Finance Committee, be it therefore resolved that at the, that the 2021 discretionary budget of the Town of Collins Public Library presented as Schedule A to this board resolution is hereby approved and shall be allocated."
Okay, can I get a motion to approve this resolution?
Excuse, excuse me, Holly, question?
Yeah.
I believe Edith said 6 o'clock, we actually started at 6:10, will that be a factor?
Thank you, David.
Well, you know, sometimes it matters.
I thought it was 6 o'clock. I didn't see it was 6:10, oh, well.
Well, everybody was not on at 6 o'clock, we didn't have a quorum.
Ah, okay, I missed that completely.
You're busting your chops, Edith.
No, I'm not, seriously. If it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, but normally, when you're doing.
That's 6:10, it's officially 6:10.
Well, okay.
Hey, Edith is my friend, I wouldn't bust her chops.
Be careful.
Thank you.
So are we changing the, the time on the resolution or not?
I did, I changed it.
All right, then you probably need to change it on the other one as well.
Yes, okay, I, I got that too.
Okay, so can I get a motion to, to approve this resolution? Rob, and a second?
Helga.
That was you, Helga? Okay. Okay, one more roll call, Helga?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Edith?
Aye.
Elaine?
Aye.
David?
Yes.
And I vote aye. The resolution is approved.
Okay.
So that, uh, how many we have here, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, right?
Yes, I get 8.
Okay, good, 8 and 0. Okay, Abby, one of these bylines, uh, bylaws are coming up for review?
Yep, the bylaws are coming up for their annual review, um, so that is Edith, Helga, and Barb. Um, would you prefer to meet virtually or in person?
In person.
In person.
In person.
Okay, cool, it's a small enough group, um, I was looking at sometime in the last week in April, does anybody have any days or times that won't work?
Uh, April 29th.
I don't.
And Edith usually does Tuesdays as quilting, right?
Right.
And Wednesdays is another obligation, so.
Okay, Wednesdays, I'm not in the building, so Wednesdays doesn't work for me.
Okay.
What about Monday, the 26th, um?
I don't have my calendar in front of me, Abby, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine.
It probably is fine.
Okay, I'll, I'll send out an email so that everybody can double check, um.
Okay.
The 26th at like 11 a.m., does that sound okay?
Yeah.
Uh, 11:30?
11:30 is fine.
11:30 is good for me.
I get wheels and wheels on Mondays.
Okay, 11:30 is good for me.
Works for me.
As of now.
Yeah, I'll send out an email, if we need to change it, we need to change it.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we have no public expression, the next board meeting is June 3rd at 6 p.m. And unless anybody has anything else, speak now forever, hold your peace, this meeting is a, this meeting is adjourned, thanks.
Okay. Abby, I want to echo Elaine's comment, I thought your brochure that Jen made is great.
Thank you.
And you're going to give me Try-R.